The Topeka City Council Meeting will come to order. I ask you to rise, defend your able, and give your attention to Deputy Mayor Sheldon Elizoff for the invocation and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us pray. Heavenly Lord, thank you so much for this day. Thank you for all the people that you have in the city, for all of those that come with their hands to help and to build up this community. Father God, we just pray for you tonight. We ask for wisdom, Father, as we're making big decisions for our city tonight. We ask for unity, Lord, as we keep in mind the fact that we are here to serve your community and serve the people that you've entrusted us with. God, thank you for all the members of the council. I pray special blessing on all of them, all their families, Lord. Nobody understands the level of sacrifice that they put in, Father. So, Father God, I also pray for the staff. Be with them, lead them, and guide them. Fill this room tonight. It is in your name that we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This evening, we are celebrating the completion of the work by our AmeriCorps team that has been here for three months, doing a number of activities in the community, significant work in neighborhoods, just in a whole many different ways. But the best way to describe what they did is a video that's been prepared, so that's why we're having them stay there. They can see better by that screen out there. So if we will run the video, which gives us the introduction to their work.
The city of Topeka Department of Relations has been blessed by having the AmeriCorps Sun Five Team with us for the last 90 days. These nine young people from across the United States of America have impacted our neighborhood improvement associations and our citywide event in a manner nationally priceless.
My name is Jared Lanier. I'm the team leader for the AmeriCorps Sun Five Team that's in Topeka, Kansas, working with the city of Topeka.
Hi, I'm Byazek Griffin Alishevich. Are you on me a cell?
Why don't you have Monique emailing me?
All right, great.
We worked with Rock the Block program where we go, we're not scared of the right away.
I feel like we've really managed to touch the Topeka community with the number of different projects we've done. I really especially think that's true with the Friday Family Fun Nights, working with children, low-income communities. You can really just see it in their faces and the things they say. They really, really appreciate that time, that space, that safe area where they can just play games with the young kids.
The AmeriCorps recognized that we wanted to turn this into a free business room for the community. What we did is we said, we got an empty room, here's some equipment, let's see what you can do. They painted malls, cleaned rooms out there. We organized things that would have taken us a very long time to do. The AmeriCorps workers came in and knocked it out very, very quick. They are some exceptional people.
They answered telephones, they accepted donations, they sat down and spoke with our veterans and had conversations. We don't have a lot of youth volunteers, so it's always wonderful to have young people that are willing to spend time with our mature veterans. So we'd like to say to Sun Five Team, to Sun Five Team, thank you very much, and we're hoping that AmeriCorps will actually look at us in the future to be a sponsored city.
Roll group. Tall in the back, lesser tall in front. No one is short. All right, there we are. Well, the video gave us an overview of what you did, I know, in the neighborhoods. Monique, you can describe a little bit more in detail some of the places, the events where they were.
Sure, absolutely, Mr. Mayor. So, we are proud to announce that the AmeriCorps Sun Five Team made a significant difference in our city. Not only do they help with city events like the E-Cycle event, where they helped with 765 cars and with over 50,000 tons, excuse me, pounds of electronics, they helped with Rockin' the Block and various neighborhood improvement associations, they helped with many of the Friday Family Fun Nights, they helped with community building, with neighborhood building, doing walk-in talks, they did an enormous amount of things.
Thank you, and we really appreciate the fact that you were here. We have a plaque to present from the city. It is the 2016 Community Service Award, presented to AmeriCorps Sun Five Team in recognition of the many contributions and faithful service to the citizenry of the city of Topeka, with heartfelt congratulations and a sincere thank you. We'll give that to you, Jared. We'll let you also speak on behalf of the team.
Okay, yeah, we really truly appreciate this. The city was extremely welcoming, and the people here in this community were just so warming and appreciative of everything that we've done. So, you know, we're gonna miss it. Like, this is a great city. I love it here. Actually, I kinda wanna leave, but, you know, we gotta... Oh, I'll definitely come back and visit sometime, but, yeah, it's been great. So we really appreciate everything you've done for us.
Where are you going?
We're going back to Denver, Colorado. We're just, we're finishing, yeah, we're finishing up now, so, yeah.
So is this team staying together yet?
Yeah, so we've been doing this for 10 months. This was actually our last project. We've done two projects before this, and this is our last one. So once we go back to Denver, we're gonna wrap it up, and then we'll all be headed home after that.
All right. Well, we have a certificate individually for each of you. Monique, and why don't we do as we did before? You come down this way and say your name and your hometown, and that will be your sign-off... You can make up a town, whatever, you can say wherever you want. That's your sign-off to Topeka, okay? All right. Sorry we're here.
I'm Rhianna Newell. I live in Eugene, Oregon.
Hello, I'm Ashley Lopez from Norwalk, California.
Hi, I'm Byazek Griffin Alishevich. I'm from Tacoma Park, Maryland.
I'm Austin Sylvia. I'm from Bristow Island.
My name is Tristan White. I'm from Annapolis, Maryland.
My name is CJ Pronforest, and I'm from Nina, Wisconsin.
I'm Nicole Patchen, and I'm from Downers Grove, Illinois.
Hi, I'm Melissa Trayphon. I'm from Lakeville, Minnesota.
I'm Nick Barnset. I'm from Sycamore, New Jersey.
I'm Jared Lanier. I'm from Birmingham, Alabama.
Thank you again. No proclamations, so we will proceed with the roll call.
Mayor Wolgas?
Here.
Councilmembers Hiller?
Here.
Cleer?
Here.
Ortiz?
Emerson?
Here.
De La Isla?
Here.
Jensen?
Present.
Schwartz?
Here.
Cohen?
Here.
And Harmon?
Councilmembers, there are no additions or deletions to the agenda, and two weeks in a row, or two meetings in a row, there's no executive session, but the meeting will be followed by a budget committee meeting. So then we will proceed with consent agenda.
A is a board appointment recommending the reappointment of Charles Melter to the Board of Mechanical Examiners for a term ending July 1, 2018. B, our minutes of the regular meeting of June 21, 2016, and there are no applications.
Okay. Consent agenda, your pleasure. Deputy Mayor Elizoff? To approve, and Councilman Jensen, seconds. Any discussion? All those in favor vote yes, opposed vote no. I vote yes.
We have nine yes.
Nine having voted yes, consent agenda is approved as read. Proceed to the action items. First is the ordinance for a conservation district.
A is an ordinance introduced by City Manager Jim Colson, amending the district map referred to made a part of the zoning ordinances by Section 1850-050 of the Topeka Municipal Code by amending the district zoning classification from R2 Single Family Dwelling District, HL-R2 Historic Landmark Single Family Dwelling District, and M1 Multi-Family Dwelling District to R2 NCD2, HL-R2 NCD2, and M1 NCD2, adding the Elmhurst Neighborhood Conservation District overlay to the existing base zoning for the residential properties between Southwest 10th Avenue to the north, Southwest Washburn Avenue to the east, Southwest Washburn Street to the south, and Southwest Boswell Avenue to the west.
Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd ask Mr. Fiander to provide a brief overview on this item. It has been presented to this body, and answer any questions for your action. Fine. Good evening. Thank you again, City Manager, Your Honor, Councilmembers. As we heard a few weeks ago, this is a proposal to have, to institute Topeka's second neighborhood conservation district, and after much hard work and much input from the neighbors and the neighborhood, I think Elmhurst and staff are definitely pleased to recommend approval on this. The specifics are it is a design overlay that will protect the character of the new, of any new construction or additions that are applied to the neighborhood. This is, this is what it would cover, and we had four public meetings, over 300 notices go out for each one of those meetings, so we feel like this has been quite an extensive process, and that was initiated by Elmhurst themselves, and staff supported it. So without, unless there are any questions, I would just stand for a motion to approve when ready.
Are there questions, Mr. Fiander? Seeing Council with the treaties.
Thank you. Bill, this is approval, approval implements design standards for new construction. So they've already had a plan, is that correct? Did Elmhurst have a plan? I thought they had a plan.
Councilmember Ortiz, they do have a neighborhood plan, but they didn't have the specifics that this, that this ordinance has with regard to new buildings, accessory structures, fences, all that sort of thing. It's much more specific in the ordinance than it was in their plan.
So does every NIA need to update their plan, then? Is that, that sounds like kinda what you're doing, then? Is that correct?
Well, not exactly needing to update it, but we, this is a tool that is for any neighborhood, and if they want to walk down the same path that West, yeah, Westborough and Elmhurst have, we have staff that are willing to support and help them walk down that path more. So it's not a total update of a plan, it's just a very specific process to help formalize design guidelines as a, as zoning. So that's, that's not exactly updating the plan, but it is, we're here, we're here to help.
Would you recommend that?
Would we recommend?
Each NIA do that?
If their plan has design guidelines, I would definitely recommend that they, that they institute, talk about, discuss, and have us out to their neighborhood to help understand the process and what they would have to do and go through. Susan Hanslick and my staff has been awesome doing those, those sort of things. I think she was just out in a neighborhood last, last week, so doing the exact same thing.
Thank you for that clarification. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Other questions? Seeing none. Councilman Jensen?
Thank you. I would first like to thank Mr. Fiander, your staff, the folks of the city, and I especially want to thank all of the volunteers in the neighborhoods who spent countless hours and countless meetings to put this together. This is an incredible thing you guys have done. I, with that, would submit a motion for approval.
Okay. Moves to approve. Deputy Mayor Elizoff, seconds. And we should say, this is a recommendation from the Planning Commission, so if you wonder why no one here from, from Elmhurst Neighborhood is coming to speak and support, they've had, they had that opportunity at the Planning Commission, and so then they, they do not come here to the council. With that, we have a motion before us. All those in favor vote yes, opposed vote no. I vote yes.
We have nine yes.
Nine having voted yes, the ordinance is approved. That completes the action items for this evening. We proceed then to the announcements. Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Very briefly, just want to talk about the fan giveaway that's been happening here in the city for a couple of weeks. It has really been a tremendous blessing to many of our residents, and it's also provided an opportunity for many individuals and groups to get together and donate some fans that have really made a difference, especially during these very balmy days within the city. We've given away 114, we've got 60 more. Those are, they keep coming in as we think we're done, more people contribute those. Starting tomorrow, people can just come to the Holiday Building during regular business hours and work with staff to get those. We'll continue to host people as they come in for this until, until we're done.
Okay. And I, I see, I changed the order. Next, we will have the reading of the agenda for next week. Just wanted to have...
You want to do it again?
A little different, yeah, you'll get an opportunity to repeat what you said if we have the agenda.
For next week's agenda, we will have two proclamations, National Night Out and Summers Meal Program Lunch Across Kansas Week. We'll have one presentation, the MTPO Regional Transportation Plan. We will have two board appointments to the Juvenile Corrections Advisory Board. We will have an advisory council appointment to the ADA Advisory Council. We will have a special event resolution for the Kansas Mariachi Festival and a noise exception for Visit Topeka. We will have a public hearing and ordinance on a vacation request for a utility easement at 1830 Southwest Wanamaker Road. We will have a notice of public hearing for the 27 operating budget on August 9. We will have a notice of public hearing date for the 2017 Consolidated Annual Action Plan on August 9. We will have approval of social services and contracted service grant allocations, and approval of the 2017 Transit Guest Text allocations. That completes the agenda.
Okay, we'll, we'll make up for this week with our test next week. Deputy Mayor Elizoff?
Thank you, Mayor Wolgas. I just wanted to say thank you to our police officers for all the hard work that they constantly do. Same goes for our firefighters and all the service people that we have in our community. In addition to that, I just wanted everybody that was watching the meeting to hear the words that the young man said. He loved Topeka, and we constantly keep on talking about how great our community is. Last week, we had a series of celebrations, and there is nothing but good vibes about this community, and it all happens because of all of you who live here. So thank you all for just being an outstanding community and for all of us working together.
Thank you. Councilman Jensen?
Thank you, Your Honor. The rumors are that we had a fairly safe Fourth of July. I want to commend everybody out there for doing their celebration in a safe manner, and I also want to send a huge, huge shout-out to all the folks at DTI and their donors and supporters and the people that volunteered at the Kansas Concert. I know it really stunk that we had to move it to the Expo Center with the rain, but my gosh, guys, that was a phenomenal event, and I just want to thank everyone that helped to put that on. That was a huge celebration of what our community has become, and it's only gonna get better from here. Thank you much.
Councilwoman Schwartz?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I missed the last budget meeting because I had a big event in my family. My granddaughter got married, so now I have another grandchild that's married, and we have 12 grandkids now, so... But I, my gem of the week is our businesses in Topeka that serve our surrounding bedroom communities. Overbrook and Carbondale are where I'm from. They had the caterer, the photographer, the tent company, the DJ. We're all from the Topeka area. So I want to salute our businesses that go miles from Topeka to take care of people in their events, so, thank you.
Councilman Cohen? Councilwoman Hiller?
I too wanted to, I too wanted to follow up about the Kansas Fourth of July events. It was phenomenal at the, at the Expo Center. You know, and the afternoon of music with the smaller bands and the food trucks inside and outside, and then the big main stage bands were our people, and they were phenomenal. And it was just, it's hard to describe the sense, besides sitting behind the mayor and watching him go on and going with the kids, I'm just saying. It was great. Also, for people who don't know, it was disruptive to, of course, have the weather and call the various events on the avenue on the 2nd of July. We all know that the Kansas Concert and the related events to that got moved to the Expo Center, but the other two, the Urban Slide as well as the Freedom Festival, have been moved down in July to July the 30th to tie in with Seek La Via, our first big bicycle festival. And I think that's gonna work really well. I was at a meeting about that event today. Seek La Via is really focused on the streets and the sidewalks and just enjoying Kansas Avenue. That will be the new intro to the public to Kansas Avenue in celebration. So everybody should get all day Friday, or Saturday, the 30th on their calendar, including the Shawnee County largest workout the night before, and a glow ride, and a concert outdoors, and then a 30-to-50 mile bike ride following up on Sunday morning, the 31st. So it will be a full and fun weekend. Thank you.
Councilwoman Cleer?
Reminder that the North Community Band will be playing at Garfield Gazebo, 7:30 July 11th. Reminder about the Fiesta Mechicon coming July 12th through the 16th. And we have the Sheepdog Impact Assistance of Kansas is deploying to go to West Virginia to help with the flood cleanup, and I'm praying for them that they'll be safe. And driving over here, I still saw a lot of trash from the 4th, so don't forget to pick up your trash from last night. Okay, thank you.
Councilwoman Ortiz? Councilman Anderson? Well, I appreciate the comments on the, everything connected with the 4th and downtown, and I think it's, as has been said by a number of you, the city can be very proud of what we have shared together, and the attendance has just been amazing at all the different events, the openings on Kansas Avenue, and then actually Saturday night at the, at the Expo for the Kansas Concert. And it was, that really was the celebration for the opening of Kansas Avenue, but it was pretty much a rock concert, and that's okay, we understand, but we're gonna be celebrating again, have other opportunities to do the same. That completes the announcements, so they will go to public comment. The first speaker is Douglas Smith. Yeah, I'm sorry, yeah, you go over here to the podium, and you have four minutes. There are lights there that come on, the green light when you start, and then the white one will come on when you have one minute left for you to sort of wrap up, and then the red light is when you're finished.
All right. Well, good evening. I am here on behalf of Topeka Jump to speak about the opportunity the council has before them to invest or make a down payment on the plan for Safe and Affordable Housing Task Force, is working on and will present to this council before the end of the year. Mayor, I, we are glad to have your leadership on the task force, and we thank you for that. My name is Douglas Smith, and I, my church, Gethsemane Worship Center, resides in Councilmember Cleer's district. My wife and I, and a number of your other constituents, signed a letter to you, and I hope you'll take the time to read, and we'll, we'll make sure we get those to you. I appreciate your consideration and my concern in the $10 million that the council will decide how to spend next year. As a personal testimony, I'm a person that drives a lot for my professor. I'm a professor at Emporia State University. I drive a lot, so I do appreciate the hard work that you all invest in our city streets. Having gotten a flat tire once, I do appreciate those efforts. Our church located in North Topeka, North Topeka, 1404 North Kansas Avenue, is only blocks away from Garfield Park and Quincy Elementary School. We're honored to be a part of the North Topeka area. However, as we travel and walk through the area surrounding our church, we see a, a community that needs an opportunity to not only have safe streets, but to have safe and affordable housing. We would invite each and every one of you, if you haven't been in that North Topeka area, just, just drive around and you'll see what I'm talking about. There are a lot of houses that are in need of, of repair. The neighborhoods that surround my church are suffering because the houses continue to deteriorate. Homeowners need help, but an improvement in rental property would go a long way to facelift the neighbors that typically need to be encouraged to do better. You have an opportunity to make a down payment on a plan the newly formed Safe and Affordable Housing Task Force is developing. So I'd ask you, please, consider using a portion of the $10 million left over from the Streets Project for a quality of measurable, like, safe and affordable housing. Thank you for your time, and thank you for listening.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. The next speaker is Judy Nicholson. I'm sorry, okay. Hello.
Pardon me for reading this, but that'll get this taken care of pretty concisely, I think, instead of me rambling on. I'm here on behalf of Topeka Jump, and also on behalf of Circles of Greater Topeka, to speak about your opportunity to invest in the plan that the Safe and Affordable Housing Task Force is working on. And I especially want to thank you, Mayor Wolgas, for your leadership on this task force. My name is Judy Nicholson, and I live in Councilmember Michelle De La Isla's district, number five. The Jump churches that fall within that district are First Baptist Church and Southern Helsmene Night Church. I am a member of Central Congregational Church, which is located in Councilmember Hiller's district, one. Councilmember De La Isla, along with several of your other constituents, I have signed a letter to you that I know that you will read and think about. I also know that you understand the need for safe and affordable housing in Topeka. Thank you for considering my interest in how the council decides to spend the $10 million left over from street projects. By the way, I want to thank the city for their excellent, for the excellent way that y'all are handling street repairs. The crews are in, done, and out without, in as short a time as possible, without lingering and necessarily tying up the streets and intersections, and I really appreciate that. As I said, I represent both Jump and Circles of Greater Topeka. Circles is a comprehensive anti-poverty program. We help individuals and families get out of poverty and become financially stable over the long term. Right now, we have a cohort of 10 participants, who we call Circle Leaders, going through the initial training phase. Three of the 10 are from the rescue mission. Of the remaining seven, only one has not had a significant issue with housing at some time over the past few years. Availability is not the only issue. Folks have trouble paying rent that is over half their monthly income. They have trouble shoehorning in all the family members who live with them. They have trouble getting the landlord to fix what is broken sometimes, and sometimes they even have trouble finding a place to live because of a bad credit rating, sometimes through no fault of their own. Even people who own their own homes are not immune from those problems. I recently found out that an acquaintance has been living without running water since January, when a pipe broke and the water was turned off. They own the house, but cannot afford a plumber to fix the pipe. According to citidata.com, 27.6% of Topekaans live in poverty. That's about every fourth person that you'll meet on the street. A person is considered to be living in poverty if their annual income is at or below $11,880 for a single individual, or $24,300 for a family of four. That's not a lot of money. Circles does not consider that a person is financially stable until they are earning at least 200% of these federal poverty guidelines. For people living in poverty, housing is one of the biggest issues of concern. An individual making $12,000 will take home around $850 per month. 40% of that, generally the accepted percentage of one's budget to spend on housing costs, is only $340 per month for rent and utilities. It is completely unrealistic to believe that this individual can be served by the general, unsubsidized housing market. I ask that you consider using a portion of the $10 million that's been left on the I ask that you consider using a portion of the $10 million that's been left on the table.
Okay, you want to complete.
I'm sorry. So yes, please use some money for housing, and I sincerely thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. We appreciate that. Raylene Penner. Raylene Penner. That's Penner here. Here we go on. Alvira Johnson. Alvira Johnson.
My name is Joyce Reeveley. I live at 1115 Southwest Lincoln Street. Good evening. I am here on behalf of Topeka Jump to speak about the opportunity the council has before them to invest.
Joyce, would you move over to your right closer to the microphone so we can all hear you? Thank you.
Okay. Good evening. I am here on behalf of Topeka Jump to speak about the opportunity the council has before them to invest, make a down payment on the plan the Safe and Affordable Housing Task Force is working on and will present to this council before the end of the year. Mayor Wolgast, we are so glad to have you as our leader on this task force. As I've said, my name is Joyce Reeveley, and I live in Councilmember Karen Hiller's district. Councilmember Hiller, the Jump Churches that fall within your district are Asbury Mount Olive, Central Congregational, In God's House, Inward Faith, Outward Ministries, and Westside Baptist Church. I and 60 other constituents have signed a letter to you that I hope you take time to read. I appreciate your consideration of my interest in the $10 million the council will decide how to spend next year. I ask you to help more than 7,000 families in the city of Topeka. They are living in conditions I would not dare live in. There are homes that surround my church neighborhood that continue to deteriorate. It is sad to see homes vacant and city crews cutting grass. Improvements to deteriorating homeowner and rental properties will be benefited by instilling pride in their home, their neighborhood, and their city. Councilmembers, you have an awesome opportunity to make the first investment on the plan the newly formed Safe and Affordable Housing Task Force is in the process of developing. Please consider using a portion of the $10 million left over from the street projects for a quality of life measure like safe and affordable housing. Thank you all for your service and your time to listen.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments.
Good evening. I am also here with Topeka Jump, and I would like to also speak about the Affordable Housing Task Force. Mr. Mayor, thank you very much for your leadership. My name is Kristi Grecian, and I live in Councilmember Jensen's district. Mr. Jensen, the Jump Churches that fall within your district are Most Pureheart and Mary Catholic Church and Westminster Presbyterian Church. In addition, many of my fellow parishioners also reside in Councilmembers Cohen and Harmon's districts. I and many of your other constituents have signed a letter to you that I hope you'll take the time to read. We ask that you take our views into consideration as you determine the best way to spend the excess $10 million that is currently available in our community. We understand the importance of quality streets in our city, especially with the weather that we have to cope with in Kansas. However, there is another area in our city that's in critical condition. We need to address our housing problem and help the 7,000-plus families that are currently living in unaffordable or uninhabitable housing. Please consider using a portion of the $10 million left over from the Streets Projects for a quality of life measure such as safe and affordable housing. Thank you for your service and time.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments.
I'm Robert McAdoo. I live at 842 Southwest Anderson Terrace. I am in Councilman Harmon's district. And I also would suggest or recommend or have you recommend that part of this $10 million go to the plan that is currently being developed that for the housing, safe and affordable housing. As mentioned before, there are 7,000 families currently in Shawnee County that cannot afford or are living in substandard housing. I live in an area just east of Gage Park, and I know my neighborhood has been seeing quite a number of not sale houses but rental houses, and the repairs are not there. So and I've been in Topeka now for 45 years, and I have seen over this time that some of our neighborhoods are deteriorating a little bit. So I just ask for your consideration on using some of this money for the Housing Task Force. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. We have two others who signed up. If they are here, Raylene Penner.
Good evening.
Evening.
I too am here on behalf of Topeka Jump. My name is Raylene Heinz Penner, and I live in Councilmember Elaine Schwartz's district. In that district, the Jump Church is the Southwest Baptist Church. And I am asking, along with other signees, that you take the time to read our letter and consider our request as you decide how to spend the $10 million sales tax dollars. We do understand and appreciate the year of the Streets' effort the city has initiated and will continue to support in years to come. At the same time, we know that street improvement will be a never-ending priority for this city. Now is an especially important time to attend to what we consider a crisis and a rare opportunity to address it. More than 7,000 Topeka families live in housing conditions that are really hardly livable. In many cases, they're unsafe. The neighborhoods surrounding my church, which is on Southeast 37th Street, includes many dozens of rental houses that have deteriorated dramatically, and they continue to deteriorate for those families who live in them. We think the city has a unique opportunity to use just a portion of the $10 million allocated for street projects to support the work of this newly formed Safe and Affordable Housing Task Force. A down payment on their work would begin a really important effort by our city, which we think could have a dramatic impact on the quality of life for literally thousands of low-income people in our community. We do thank you for your service and thank you for listening.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. Alvira Johnson. Alvira is not here. That then completes the public comment for this evening. There is no executive session, so on that, there being no further business before the council, the meeting is adjourned. Then we will shortly go into the Budget Committee meeting.
Thank you, Mayor Wolgast. We will break for five minutes.